Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 28, 2013. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is fans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Piana?
Here.
Lemon?
Here.
And Mayor Coulter?
Here, thank you. Next item would be approval of the agenda. Any additions or changes to the agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add, under Presentations, a proclamation declaring June 2013 as Gay Pride Month in the city of Ferndale.
All right. We'll add that as Presentation D. Because I see our county commissioner, and we'd like to have, give her an opportunity to present, I will make her Presentation E this evening. So I'll add her to the agenda as well. Any other changes?
I move that we accept the agenda as amended.
I support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Piana. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lemon?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. So moving on to Presentations, our first presentation this evening is Police Officer of the Year, and Police Chief Collins is here to make a presentation on that. Now, we got a, we now got a wireless handheld for you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Your Honor. Each year, the lieutenants of the Police Department and previous years winner will put forth the name of a police officer who we have recognized as the best of the best for 2013. This year, I could have also Jim Ferris come up here. Jim started his career in law enforcement in 1995 with the Pontiac Police Department. He worked there for many years, rose to the rank of Sergeant, and in the year 2007, someone, was captain at the time, the Ferndale Police Department, told him, "You should come to a stable environment," because there was a little bit of discord in the city of Pontiac. And I talked him into coming and taking the job with the Ferndale Police Department, where he worked for us for three solid years, got a lot of good work out of him, and then we laid him off. In that interim, Jim worked for Clarkson Police Department, the Highland Park Police Department, the Auster Police Department, and the Hazel Park Police Department.
Couldn't keep a job, huh?
Jim also interrupted people and talking over them, but it's fine. When we called him back to duty, he took a position at the Tapped into the Morning Center, which he has been a school resource officer there since that day until today, where he still works. Jim has fostered relationships with students, staff, and the community, as well as Detroit Police Department, and he's worked, and he's done just an outstanding job at that facility, just working well with everybody there. We felt that it was, it was just a great person to bestow this honor upon. Jim also has had a lot of experience in law enforcement in the Pontiac Police Department. He's also an instructor with the Oakland Police Academy, and he's just, one day when we get somebody that says junior to him, maybe we can move him over to the Tapped into the Morning Center, and Jim can come back and do what he's really good at in that street. So for Jim, for the best for the best of 2013, we would like your work as the Ferndale Police Officer of the Year, and you will have a presentation for your award. I appreciate it.
Jim, thanks for coming and being here in person to accept that, and thanks for all your work that you do. Appreciate it. Our next presentation is a condolence resolution for Lawrence Connolly. Is there someone here? I'm not sure that we actually have someone here to present this one. So if not, I will read this. But this was actually brought to my attention by a former mayor, actually. Former Mayor McGee brought this up, and I want, let me read the resolution so that you'll understand. At a regular meeting in the City Council of the city of Ferndale held in the council chambers on the 28th day of May 2013, Mayor Dave Coulter, on behalf of the Ferndale City Council, extends the city's condolences to the family of Lawrence Connolly. Lawrence Connolly, a longtime Ferndale resident, passed away on April 25, 2013. Mr. Connolly, at the age of 22 years old, was the sole witness to the murder of an Oak Park Patrol Officer, Henry Wolfe, in 1973. After his testimony helped convict the murderer of Officer Wolfe, Mr. Connolly endured years of torment and intimidation from the imprisoned felon. Lawrence Connolly will be missed by many, but especially by his son and his four siblings. Lawrence Connolly was a credit to his family and his community, and it is with deep sorrow that we mourn his loss. That is, I move for unanimous adoption of that.
Support it.
Support.
Thank you very much. So rest in peace, good resident of Ferndale, a brave man. Next item of business would be the West Nine Mile Road project update. And April, are you, oh, Lloyd's going to, I'm sorry. Lloyd is here to, Project Manager of West Nine Mile. Are we winning the West?
Well, we're making progress. That certainly is true. You know, overall, the project is on schedule, although this week we've lost a little bit of time due to rain today and yesterday's holiday. With the weather forecast, you know, predicting more rain for the rest of the week, it's likely there may be a couple of rain days. But overall, the project is scheduled for four 10-hour workdays to allow for rain days, and so overall, the project is on schedule. This week's work will primarily focus on installing water main between Libranoy's and Pinecrest. It will also entail reconnection of our service lines, new service lines being installed off of the new water main that has passed its bacteriological and pressure tests. There is some removal still going on with where we are salvaging pavers and that sort of thing, you know, infrastructure that's out there in the right of way still that we're going to reuse. It's in perfectly good shape. DPW crew has responded to water main breaks, flooding requests after today, you know, some of the drainage structures are blocked to prevent soil erosion concerns, and so, you know, we had to go out and make some adjustments in the middle of a couple of the downpours today, but we did respond to those and were able to respond to the business owners' requests. In addition to that, I don't know if I mentioned the water main break, but we did have a water main break last week, which I was pleased to say that, you know, they discovered a four-inch line that was not marked on our plans, and they discovered it by breaking it, but we did respond, and within two hours, we were able to get it repaired and get the water back on. And so the response has been very good. The contractor has also responded to numerous quests, requests from both the DDA and the DPW to replenish driveways, make sure that they have enough gravel and that they're accessible to, you know, the general public, so the business owners will be inconvenienced as little as possible. The project is really in that stage where you have to break a few eggs to make an omelet, and we're right in the middle of that right now. However, by the next time I report back to council, the most typical portion of the project, the installation of the water main, should be done or all but done. And so that was really a point where we're turning the corner and making some real progress. When the curb starts going down later this week, it will help define the project as well, and people will begin to see what the new Nine Mile will look like. So be happy to answer any questions you have. I'll leave it at that.
Are there any questions for Lloyd?
I don't have a question, it's just a comment. I think overall, the perception of the project's going very well, so thank you for all your hard work to that. But I also want to recognize the DDA for what I think has been a very well-executed communication plan to residents and businesses as well. It seems like every day my phone's going off with text alerts and emails and things like that. So I just, all around, a really great team effort. So thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. The next presentation is one that we added, that's a proclamation for Gay Pride Month. And Dan, do you want to introduce that item?
Yeah, I'd be honored to. Thank you. I'll just read the proclamation.
That'd be great.
The proclamation declaring June 2013 as Gay Pride Month for the city of Ferndale. The city of Ferndale is a city rich in diversity, and this diversity is demonstrated in the people who live, work, shop, and socialize in our city. And we, the City Council of Ferndale, value this diversity and appreciate and celebrate the rich variation of persons in our city. We benefit from the multiple talents, viewpoints, and cultural backgrounds of all our citizens. And this city is proud to be, is proud of its American heritage, that accepts and welcomes diverse people, and we believe in a society that treats people on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings without prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical challenges. And we understand and appreciate the cultural, civic, and economic contributions of the gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender communities to the greater community of Ferndale, particularly in regard to the city's resurgence over the past 20 years. And we recognize June as the month celebrated worldwide each year with pride by the GLBT communities, and that June 2013 is the 44th anniversary of the beginning of the modern lesbian gay rights movement, which began in June 1969 in the great city of New York. Therefore, be a resolved that the City Council recognizes and declares June 2013 as Gay Pride Month in the city of Ferndale, and we pledge to continue our efforts at creating and maintaining a city which is free and open city that provides equal opportunity, fair treatment, and human dignity for all people, and that a copy of this resolution be sent to neighboring cities that border the great city of Ferndale, to the Executive of the County of Oakland, to the Governor of the state of Michigan, and our U.S. representatives, to the House of Representatives, and our senators.
Would you like to move for unanimous adoption?
Sure. So moved. Or support.
Very good. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And June is almost here?
Saturday.
And June 1st is Pride in Ferndale. So we'll probably talk more about that, I'm guessing. And finally, Presentation E, our county commissioner, my friend Helene Zach is here to give us an update on what's happening in Oakland County.
Thank you, everybody. I wanted to let you know that the new prescription plan, discount card, is available, and I did bring in cards, and they'll be posted at the City Hall. People want more information, they can go to CoastToCoastRx. It's coast, the number two, coastrx.com. And just quickly, this is not a prescription plan, it's a discount card. It's a new and improved model from what we had previously. You could save up to 75% on prescriptions. Multitude of independent and chain pharmacies are participating. You don't, you can use this with your insurance. If you have a high formulary, you can pull out this card, you might get it cheaper than your insurance. There's also some other services like x-rays, dental, that are included in this plan, so ask, read about it. I do want to tell one disclaimer. I was on the committee that picked this organization, and the one thing that this organization is doing that I was not in favor of, every prescription that is filled by an Oakland County resident, they will pay $1.25 back to the Oakland, Oakland County. I would have preferred that that discount go into the pocket of the person filling the prescription, but they were unable to do that. So what we're doing is we've created a fund in the Board of Commissioners that will be the health, you know, the fees from this, and when, we will decide how to spend it on some other healthcare project or projects throughout Oakland County once we have a pot of money to spend.
Excellent. Like a free health clinic, for instance.
It's on my list.
Ross throwing out ideas.
It's on my list. So trust me, I'm thinking the same way you are. I do want to let you know, there's another thing that we approved that I think has a great opportunity. The state of Michigan was offering this special type of software program called Vetrispec to all veteran, all counties, to service veterans. It's a new and improved computer program. It will allow us to simplify veteran services, and yes, we do have a Veterans Department in Oakland County with counselors, and what they do for our residents is they help residents secure their federal benefits and sort through the quagmire of all the federal regs. And we roughly bring somewhere at least $1 million back to residents and benefits by having this Oakland County Department. So this new computer software will allow our veterans counselors to be mobile, which means maybe we could have services in Ferndale at some point. We can do services via the web, print out forms, access resources. I'm really excited about the opportunity. And the head of the Veterans Service Department actually lives on this end of town, so I, you know, I hope to be able to do, you know, have those services like the clerk. We also, there was some leftover funding from the Homeland Security funding, you know, the UASI grant. Oakland County accepted over a half a million dollars, and they are purchasing something called the Lenovo Bearcat vehicle. And if you watched the bomb, bomb, you know, Boston Bomb Recovery, and you saw those big tanks, that's what this is. So our sheriff has a new toy to respond, respond to Homeland Security issues, but it will benefit all of us if it needs to be utilized. I also want to remind you that there are many grants for the arts and for health projects through the county, and you can apply online to Kristy Zamora. There's applications. You can get up to $2,000. We've used them for art projects, library, things like that. We actually accepted a little bit more money this year from the state. When Mayor Coulter and I first started, there was $75,000 allocated to the county. It went down to 19,000, now it's back to about 32,000. But I do hope that Ferndale residents will take advantage of this grant. There's also many health grants through the Brooksy Way Foundation. There is a walk in the fall, and the proceeds from that go toward health grants. I know, for example, the Charter Township of Royal Oak got a grant a couple of years ago for their urban garden. So I do encourage people to apply for that as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions of Commissioner? Thanks, as always, for coming. Appreciate the information. All right. That concludes our Presentations this evening. Next item of business would be Call the Audience. Call the audience is up to 30 minutes now for you to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, because you get the opportunity to speak to that item when we get to that portion of the agenda. Three minutes now to say your piece, whatever you like. Give us your name, your address, and tell us what's on your mind. Is there anyone that'd like to speak during Call the Audience? Chris isn't shy.
Well, I looked around, and nobody got up. So, good evening, Mayor, Council. Chris Hughes, Communications and Marketing Manager for the DDA. Thank you for the compliment on communication. We've been trying very hard to make sure that everybody gets the information that they need to have to get through the construction, get around the construction, and we just, I'm just here tonight to remind everybody that all of our businesses are open, and it's nice and easy to get to them. You are going slow anyway, so just pull on in. And we've been communicating regularly with everyone, and if you want to get on to our text alerts and be aware of everything, we invite you to go to downtownferndale.com. There's a place you can sign up, and you will start getting messages from us, perhaps more than you want, but you will know what is going on. So please join us in that way. Next tomorrow, tomorrow morning, is FerNet, the B2B networking meeting hosted by the DDA's Business Development Committee. We will be meeting at 9:00 a.m. at Rosie O'Grady's, and our subject for the morning is How to Make What's Happening Your Happening, featuring great ways to capitalize on the summer's upcoming events. There are 13 event days in all, which is, and then some. One of them is coming up on Saturday, and I think Greg Pollock is here to talk about it, but we're excited and thrilled that you declared June Gay Pride Month. The Ferndale Pride and Rainbow Run is happening this Saturday, so we're looking forward to that. The DDA will have a presence at Pride. We'll be sharing info and selling tickets to the upcoming Art Town event. Be looking into those grants. So we're going to bring back our fans, but we hope it's not that hot of a night. And our brochures about Art Town, our event, our, excuse me, our exhibit, and try to raise money to purchase some of that art that we made a commitment to buy. And we're going to be asking the public to start voting on which sculptures that are placed around town you would like to see. If you haven't seen all of the sculptures, you can pick up a brochure at our office, which is about Art Town, the exhibit, and they will be around town in the next month at all the places that have sponsored them. We have generously received support from this from Motor City Casino Hotel, as well as nine downtown Ferndale and Ferndale businesses and one individual. So tickets are $20. The event is June 21st from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., and we're going to raise money and buy art. So we're very excited about that, and it's going to be a nice, low-key event. It's going to be really cool this year, as in temperature, as opposed to the 110 it was last year. Finally, the DDA will be launching its market analysis in the next few weeks to provide us with the demographics and the pertinent information we need to attract and recruit and retain our businesses, critical information to the continued growth and stability of the district. So if somebody comes up to you on the street and very nicely asks you a question about, would you like to participate in a survey, please say yes, after they flash their credentials. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Have a great couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, appreciate you being here. Mr. Pollock?
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I am here to promote Ferndale Pride, which takes place this Saturday, June 1st. The day starts out at 9:00 a.m. with registration for the Rainbow Run. They're expecting 1,000 runners. I think a notice came out today that there's about 50 spaces left, so I think they're going to reach their 1,000, 1,000 mark. The run starts at 10:30. It should conclude by noon, which opens up the festival, which will start out with a rainbow balloon launch and a welcome by the mayor. We have a number of acts this year on the main stage. We also have a DJ dance area that's going to be at 9:00 in Woodward. There's over 65 vendors, 75 spaces, which is about 20% more than we had last year when we were on Troy. We've actually started turning away vendors because we no longer have the space. So we are looking for a really great year. It ends at 9:00 sharp, and we hope that everybody comes out and joins us. And this is a family-friendly event? This is a very family-friendly event. Blue Cross, I'm sorry, Blue Care Network is our children's area sponsor. They're going to be handling all the activities, and my understanding is that they're very physical activities, like hula hoop and jump rope and physical activity games. So yes, everyone is welcome. Thank you.
And I know you have over 100 volunteers, so just on behalf of Council, please thank them and let them know how much we appreciate all the work they've put into this event.
Thank you. Thank you. We can always use more volunteers, especially at 9:00, when things close down. Everyone likes to kind of spread out and continue the party, but I'm going to be there folding tables and tents and chairs, so I could always use a few extra hands at 9:00, helping break things down. But yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg.
Jeannie Davis. Jeannie Davis, president of the Ferndale Seniors. My event, really kind of small, but the Ferndale Seniors, at our next meeting, which is Wednesday, June 12th, at 11:00 a.m. at the Culic Center in Mission Street, we're hosting a talk by Ferndale's own flower child. If everybody's heard of Sparrow, she lives on St. Louis, and she's an earth poet. She's got a wonderful, bright, fresh outlook on life, and she'll be talking to us on how to squeeze the most out of your life. And everybody is welcome, as I say, it's free. You don't have to be a senior, just come and enjoy, and we're really a very friendly bunch. We don't bite much. And also, just previews of coming attractions, on the 26th, we're hosting the Royal Oak Handbell Choir. We've had them before, and they're absolutely amazing. They generally pack the room. So Mission is Free, so please come, 11:00 a.m., the Culic Community Center.
Excellent. Those sound a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Good evening, Sherri.
Good evening. Sherri Wells, West Troy Street, which many more people got a chance to see over on Monday. We're really proud of how we spiffed it up for you all. Lesson five, and I think this is the last one, on how not to have the city pay for trash we don't need to pay for. And this one is how to stop, instead of putting it in the trash, www.frecycle.org. Friend of mine here in Ferndale said she's used it for years. If you have something you just want to get rid of, you post it on Freecycle, you put a sign on it, you put it not at the curb, but at somewhere where someone who says, "Yes, I would like that," can come get it. You can get things free that people are just trying to unload without putting them into the trash, the garbage heap. Most of us know about Salvation Army and Purple Heart. Don't forget them when you come to throw things away. The former neighbors I had had three teenagers, and I so often saw big garbage bags of just clothes that these young people didn't want to wear anymore. They're just throwing them out. It was horrendous. So you don't have to do that. Just remember the Salvation Army, the Purple Heart will even call you every other week if you want them to. Now, home improvement articles and such, there is a place to get them even picked up. Habitat for Humanity has these restores, and in fact, you can go to them, there's one in Oakland County, there's one in Detroit, not that far, to buy things if you want, but you can also have them pick up some of your home improvement materials that you don't want to use, that you're done with the project, there's some leftover stuff you want to get rid of without having to throw it in the trash. So give them a try. It's the Habitat for Humanity Restore on the website. They have all the things they will take and a list of those things they won't, but you can actually arrange for a pickup. And as they say, don't dis, anyways, donate and deduct, get a deduction for them instead of just trash the stuff. So thank you all for listening. I have heard from some people. One even sent me a message through Facebook asking a question, so it's, when I get a report on how our trash has gone down and recycling's gone up, that will just be the frosting on the cake.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address Council this evening? If not, we will close Call the Audience, and we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are those that Council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless something is removed by Council from the consent agenda. First of all, let me read it. Item A, Approval of the Minutes of the Regular and Special Meetings Held May 13, 2013. B, Adoption of Ordinance Number 1142, Amending Chapter 18, Traffic and Motor Vehicle Code, Article 1, in general, Section 18 through 9, to the Ferndale Code of Ordinance, and Approval of the Letter of Understanding between the Hazel Park School District and the city of Ferndale to Enforce Traffic and Parking Ordinances on Hazel Park School District property located within Ferndale. C, Approval of Traffic Control Order 2012-2, Changing the North Curb of Fox Street between Kensington and Shasta to No Parking, as submitted by our Chief of Police. D, Approval of the Rescheduled Dates of July 13, 2013, and September 7, 2013, for the Preapproved Special Events Permit for Motor City Street Eats, and to Cancel the Originally Approved Dates of August 3 and October 5, 2013, as detailed in the Event Director's Memo. E, Approval to Appoint Director of Public Works Lloyd Curtin as Representative and City Manager April Lynch as Alternate to the Sacra Board of Trustees for a term, for the fiscal year 2014 term. F, Approval to Purchase 10 Pay Here Signs and Lights from Little Buildings, Inc. of Romeo, Michigan, at a cost of $20,970, and to Charge the Expense to the Auto Parking Fund. G, Approval to Start the Recruitment Process for the Position of Recreation Supervisor. And finally, H, Approval of the Bills and Payroll, as Submitted by the City Manager's Office, Subject to the Review of the Council Finance Committee. What is Council's pleasure on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Piana, seconded by Lemon. Any discussion on the consent agenda? By Council, by anyone in the audience? If not, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lemon?
Yes, yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda. Item A, Consideration to Adopt Ordinance Number 1143, Amending Chapter 18. Item A, consideration to adopt ordinance number 1143, amending Chapter 18, Traffic and Motor Vehicle Code, to add Article 11 residential parking zones to provide for the creation of residential parking zones. April, are you going to introduce that?
I am, yes. About, actually, a little over a year ago, we instituted a pilot for some neighborhood parking issues that we have surrounding the DDA area or the downtown area, if you will. And over the course of the last year, we committed to making sure that we reached out to those who live in that particular area of how things were going. And we did receive a lot of feedback and we found that we still have some room for growth in that area, so we're not ready to fully implement it yet. So what we're advising and we're asking, actually requesting the City Council is that two things take place. We want to extend the pilot through the end of this fiscal year, or through this calendar year, with the same parameters, except that we want to increase enforcement hours to 1:00 AM, with the focus being that we need to reevaluate how we enforce in that particular area. So I'm working with the Chief of Police right now to establish more aggressive enforcement, if you will, as well as we need to increase our capacity as it relates to the number of enforcement officers that we have and/or hours. So we need, we need more time to do that. So we want to get through another summer. The consistent feedback was just enforcement wasn't enough and they wanted it later. And in September, we'll do another survey to see how things have changed as we reevaluate where we're going, as well as how in the end are we going to close that out and either make that an official particular area and how the residential parking zones go. Because it also, for those that like the program, there is still a segment of that area that doesn't want that. So we'll be working through that and bringing some ideas and thoughts to Council in the fall. But the request really is just to extend the pilot and also increase the hours of enforcement to 1:00 AM.
Very good. Are there questions?
I have a couple. I'm fully supportive of this, but here's my two questions. One, Council passed an ordinance that allowed any residential area to put a residential parking zone in with 2/3 of the vote, or I don't know what the actual threshold is. How does this impact that ordinance?
If I could, April. If I could, Councilman, the existing ordinance that Council previously passed has sunset provision. So that sunset provision has expired of its own effect. And so to the extent that Council wishes to extend the program, it needs to readopt the ordinance. So this ordinance is the, supersedes that sunset provision?
It does. It would readopt the ordinance and as proposed, the language of the ordinance before you would have a sunset provision of December 31st of 2013.
Okay. My second question goes to enforcement, which you spoke to, and I really appreciate, you know, as we've gone through this process, addressing where it's worked and where I think those opportunities are. Increasing the enforcement hours to 1:00 AM, I think, is a good move. But can you talk about, and I know you're still formulating the final solution, what are your thoughts around enforcement for that strategy to 1:00 AM?
Well, right now, what the Chief and I have talked about, and wave your hands if I do that wrong, is that what we're looking at is concentrated enforcement. So what we're thinking is looking at hiring another enforcement officer who focuses specifically on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, that will focus in the Troy lots and the budding neighborhoods. So that, that will be, because you don't need somebody dedicated to that particular area for the entire time, but that way that person, that enforcement officer can stay within that area. Now, they might travel to other locations, but their main component will be Friday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights and staying and focusing on that particular area.
My last request would be...
But following up on that, before you, but it, I guess, I mean, my, we're extending the hours as well. How does that impact staffing in other parts of the city? If you're going to dedicate somebody just to those, to that rather small area, what does that do for staffing outside of that area? How would that be impacted?
Well, that goes later than normal enforcement hours. So at the end, they'll be focusing particularly in that area and we're hoping that they'll be walking the neighborhood as well to address potentially being a figure, if you will, of, for those that are loud and obnoxious.
I have a question too.
But Chief, did you want to, you stepped up?
I didn't. I thought you may have some questions, but that, but the City Manager is exactly right. This would be because the, a PEO that would be assigned to the RPZ, like that. I can throw all sorts of things. But a parking enforcement officer that's assigned to the residential parking zone would not just do that because literally the amount of time it takes to check, although you have to do it constantly, consistently, if you want to do it right, they can check. Now they have a whole two hours. So we, our theory is that we'll come in the West Troy lot or the West Side lots, depending how it rolls, and then come back and check it every hour on the hour type thing.
Okay.
Until we get to the point where our meters are no longer being enforced and we will continue to check that till the end. And we felt that just having all those on a police officer, they would have a radio, they would be in uniform, and maybe that would just keep some of the quiet and disruptive behavior down as well.
Okay. And then would still be able to be dispatched to an incident if need be or somewhere else in the city?
Parking enforcement officers are not sworn.
Oh.
They're only sworn for parking.
Oh, this would just be a part, this is a parking enforcement officer only?
Part-time, for, specific, part-time specifically for those late hours of Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So we haven't formulated the exact number of hours, but it would be similar to what we have.
Is it an additional one or are we staffing, this would be an additional position? How does that impact your budget then, I guess is what?
It's not mine. It would be come out of the parking, as all of the parking enforcement officers are paid out of the parking lot.
And we will be reevaluating enforcement as it relates to parking in general throughout. This is one phase of it.
If I may to that end, the other request I would add to that then, if we're going to go into a second year on the pilot, is that data of the tickets that we write or in whatever activity come to Council on a regular basis to review as we go forward?
Good. Any other?
You asked my question.
Okay.
About how we were going to pay for it.
Is there anyone from the public that is here on this issue? A motion would be in order.
I would move that we adopt ordinance number 1143, amending Chapter 18, Traffic and Motor Vehicle Code, to add Article 11 residential parking zones to provide for the creation of residential parking zones, and to approve the extension of the residential parking zone in the West Troy and West Saratoga neighborhoods, and increase enforcement from 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM, Monday through Saturday until December 31st, 2013.
Support. Moved by Martin, supported by Lennon. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Vernon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. That concludes our regular agenda this evening. Moving on to call to Chief, anything else from the Police Department this evening? Jenny, anything from HR perspective this evening? Michael, anything from Special Events? No, working my way up. I see the Fire Chief. I'm not going to forget you this time. Fire Chief?
Your Honor, Council, I attended the awards banquet at the International Association of Arson Investigators where Fire Marshal Brian Batten won with two Sheriff Deputy and a County Prosecutor, Fire Investigator of the Year. It was for the case back in 2009 where two gentlemen set a car in fire in a little township catching two houses on fire as a strike back at his girlfriend, and they're both now serving 15 to 40. So with the excellent work of the Oakland County Sheriff's, along with Fire Marshal Batten and the prosecutor, we have put some bad boys away on the arson set of things. So congratulations to Brian.
Very much so. Thanks for sharing that. Appreciate it. Lloyd, anything else from DPW? It's all Nine Mile all the time, huh? All right. Joe, anything from your neck of the woods? Nothing. Marney, who's sitting in Abley for Sherilyn this evening, anything from the City Clerk's area?
No, thank you.
All right. Thanks for being here tonight. April, anything else from you tonight?
No.
Wow. Aunt Christ, any legal perspectives this evening?
Very briefly, Your Honor, I mentioned for the meeting, but for the balance of Council, I indicated I was going to check the status of the lawsuit regarding project labor agreements. Oral arguments are scheduled on that case for June 18th in the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals. There is a stay in effect as it relates to Public Act 98, so project labor agreements are currently, as of right now, allowed on municipal construction projects.
Okay. Thank you. Good to know. Appreciate it. Dan, Martin?
Yep, a couple of things. One, the Ferndale Community Foundation is an organization in Ferndale that annually awards micro grants up to $2,500 to nonprofits within the city. We're in the middle of our grant cycle and the deadline for grant applications is this Friday. People can find grant applications at www.ferndalecommunityfoundation.org, or they're welcome to give me a call at 248-672-4067 to assist with that process should they need it. We'll be awarding grants in the last City Council meeting at the end of June. Secondly, we all have the opportunity to participate in the Memorial Day Parade. I want to extend my congratulations to that committee. It was another very successful event. And for what it's worth, my opinion is we should always go through a residential neighborhood. I think it added so much more to that experience and for future planning, if we can continue to do that. I think that was really great. And lastly, since the last Council meeting, I had the opportunity to participate in Citizens for Fair Ferndale Stability Project at Kulik Center. And what this is, is exercise through facilitation to try to raise the level of public discourse about issues. It's about building on strengths and how to dialogue with each other and how to make sure that folks feel listened to and to really add to the constructive discussion in general about Ferndale and everything else. It's a highly valuable experience. I think their intent is to expand this through the community and other community organizations. So as folks has had the opportunity to participate in this, we all know we live in a great community and we're very proud of that. I think this only adds to that and deepens that experience. And so anyone who can continue to participate in that, I'd highly encourage you to do it. I can't say enough about the opportunity to partake in that. So thanks for them for offering it. And again, going forward, there'll be many more opportunities to do that. So I'd encourage everyone to do so. That's it.
Thanks, Dan. Mr. Lennon?
Um, I really do not have anything. I want to thank the DDA for the constant text alerts on what's happening on Nine Mile. They're doing a good job with that. Yeah, it looks like it's going to be a real busy summer.
Excellent. Melanie?
Uh, Councilwoman Piana? Yes, I just wanted to also give a shout out to Officer Ferris, who got the Police Officer of the Year Award. He's worked directly with me as well as the Dale's Neighborhood Association and supporting the Safety Committee. And that sort of emerged after the Taft school meetings. And so he's been very supportive in building relationships with the neighbors in my neighborhood. And I thought, I think he's been great. So thank you to Officer Ferris. And I just also wanted to say, the state legislators or the Finance Committee, Conference Committee has approved an increase in EVIP, and I hope of 4.8%. And I hope that helps Ferndale with our budget in the upcoming months. And I hope you'll be able to report out on that April good news rather than bad news. And again, I want to put it out there that I am running, running with quotes, which really means job walk, mostly walk, the Rainbow Run this Saturday in support of Ferndale Pride. If you don't run, but I wanted to get that out there and support our community and support the LGBT, right, LGBT community. I encourage you just to come out and try, what a great supportive community in which to try to be active if you're a couch potato, or just not generally active.
Active could be on the curb clapping, right?
Yes. You could be throwing paint. That is exercise too. So, and that's it. Thank you.
Scott?
Just that, I would concur with Dan that I thought this parade was great, having two residential, you know, streets that we went down, I guess, three or four, if you include Livernoy and some of the other streets. But we've got a street on the south, on the north side. We should have that contact on the south side. We can't go east very easily. But we ought to include as many folks as can. This was a lot more energy on the side streets and people getting out, enjoying the parade. And I thought it was great. So hopefully we can get that changed next year. That's it for this evening.
All right. I don't want to be redundant, but I do want to thank Tim Brennan and all the folks at the Memorial Association who put on the 95th consecutive Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony. It was very, very nice. A couple of things I just want to mention that happened last week. Last Monday was the very first meeting of the Blue Ribbon Commission on Ferndale Parks. We've given ourselves, I shouldn't say ourselves, it's their group, I appointed them, but they've given themselves an aggressive deadline of November to actually have recommendations back to us on council. I had told them by the end of the year, but turns out our Recreation Director might not be on active duty right till the end of the year. And so they're moving up their timeline, so November, we should hear back. But the meet, the group had a great first meeting and I look forward to a lot of great solutions and ideas from that group. And then last Thursday, the Mayor's Business Council met early Thursday morning. That's the group of CEOs of some of our largest industrial and commercial businesses in town. And we had a very good meeting with a presentation by the Vice President from Oakland Community College, who talked about workforce development and how our companies can get training dollars from the state and how they can get information from OCC as well. So really, really good energetic meeting of the Mayor's Business Council on Thursday. Very excited about that. And lastly, I hope to see everybody at Ferndale Pride this Saturday, June 1st, starting at 9:00 for the run, noon for Pride, right, Greg? All right. Thanks, everybody. And with that, meeting is adjourned.